Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our April 20th, 2021 regular meeting of the Joplin Schools Board of Education. We have a great crowd here tonight. Happy to have that. Can I have a roll call, Pat?
Yes. Derek Gander.
Present.
Brent Jordan.
Present.
Lori Musser.
Here.
Dr. David Ford.
Here.
Dr. Michael Joseph.
Here.
And Sherrod Drummond.
Here. Thank you, Pat. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have before you our agenda. I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Ford.
Second.
And thank you, Ms. Musser. It has been moved and seconded, we approve our agenda as presented. Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. That brings us to our recognition of our board member service, Dr. Moss.
Yes, I get to do that. And if you notice a little eagerness to begin the meeting tonight, it's because we have two that have served for a long time, and we want to give you some recognition for that. Board service can be sometimes a difficult and fateful job, and at other times, it can be an incredibly joyous job. And it has been an honor to serve with you because these are two of the board members that actually brought me to the job. So I will be forever grateful to you.
It was a good decision.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
So we first want to recognize Ms. Lori Musser. And Lori, I have a clap for you and appreciation of your leadership on the Joplin Schools Board of Education. You were last elected in 2016, and your term expires in April 2021. So our Joplin Technology Center made these for you, and we want you to have your placeholder as well as your lifetime activity cast to Joplin Schools. It is.
Take my place in the galley or...
And Dr. Ford, I have one for you as well. Elected in April 2014, 2018, term expired in '17, and now 2021, thanking for your service.
It's been an honor to work with you.
You guys take it easy on me.
Does that make sense where that goes? I believe that takes...I want to extend my personal gratitude to...for having served with Lori and Deb. It's been a real pleasure. I've had all my time here mostly with both of you. One-year gap with Dr. Ford, and I appreciate their time with us. So great job and really appreciate your service to the community.
We've enjoyed it.
I believe that brings us to the certification of the April 6, 2021 Board of Education Election Results. Dr. Moss.
Yes, I have that. And so the election was held on April 6, 2021. We received the certified results from the County Clerks of Jasper and Newton County. And our two new board members are Mr. Riley Hartwell and Mr. John Hurd, who are with us this evening. Administration recommends the board accept the election results as certified by the County Clerks of Jasper and Newton Counties.
I move we accept the result as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Dirk. It's been moved and seconded, we approve the election results of April 6, 2021. Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes.
And then we adjourn?
I believe that we do adjourn. Seen die?
I think that's how you say it.
Doesn't sound...
You're the adjourners.
Last year, I was adjourned last year.
Yeah, well, whatever it is, we are going to adjourn to bring in our new board members. So does that require a vote?
Just in case.
It's...I don't think it does. So we're just going to...
No, he says no.
Alrighty, we're not going to do that, so.
We're not adjournings. Secretary.
That's part of it. That's part of it. Say it now.
You guys take it easy on us. See you when they left us here.
So you got a square on the end?
Yeah. Okay.
That brings us to the swearing in of board members by our secretary.
Should I move?
I'll call the next part to order.
So should I this way?
It doesn't matter. We're informed.
If someone else is elected, then you switch. I would ask Mr. Hurd and Mr. Hartwell to come forward. We just slide.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director in and for Joplin Schools, County of Jasper, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability according to law.
Very good. And if you would both sign your oath there. And then Riley, we have somebody in the server. That's your tax. I'm going to take those, and there are two seats at the table. Will you join us?
Well, welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for your service. And the next order of business is to have our board organization meeting, so I will call that to order. And the first order of business is to open the floor for nominations for board president.
I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Wood.
Sure.
I'd like to nominate Sherrod Drummond.
Okay, so Jeff Koch is nominated and Sherrod Drummond are nominated. Are there any further nominations for the office of board president? Okay, I'll call for a vote on the nominees and the order nominated. So all for Jeff Koch.
Yes.
Is that a roll call, Pat? Yeah. Okay, Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
And I would say... Well, actually, I'll say yes.
Okay. So Jeff has received the majority. So now you guys can make your switch. And we will open the floor for nominations for board vice president. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president.
I would nominate Sherrod Drummond.
Okay, we have two nominations for Sherrod Drummond. Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Sherrod.
Seems it's time to take a vote if there are no other nominations. A roll call, Pat?
Yes.
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 Sherrod, do you have a say something there?
I don't think so. Yes, I'll vote yes.
All right, so Mr. Koch, you will preside over the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. So next order of action is committee assignments. We have four standing committees, and typically you serve on one or two committees. They are safety, finance, data committee, and then...
Policy.
Policy. I knew there was one that I wasn't...all right, so gentlemen, any preference for committees?
I want to stay on finance.
Finance, okay.
Stay on safety.
I'd like to stay on policy.
Okay, well, that makes it simple.
I'd like to be on the policy committee.
Policy. Sherrod, do you have any preference?
Give me one that nobody's on.
So we got finance, policy. Oh, thank you. I don't have to remember. Okay, so finance, data, policy, and safety.
I'll take safety.
Okay. John?
Policy or data, either one.
Okay, I'll take data as well. Lori and Deb were both on the data, so that left it...so if you take the data, there's two of us there. All right, policy, so you're getting this bad. Okay, so for policy, it is Brent, Riley, and Dr. Joseph, then Data, John, and myself. Finance, you're finance also and policy.
Well, it was all finance.
Finance, Sherrod, did you prefer finance?
Safety, I think is what I...
Okay. Anybody else on finance? I'll go on finance also. And then safety, all right, Derek and Sherrod. Anybody else? Any other? Go once, twice, and then we can always adjust if we need to.
Okay, so I've got on finance, Dr. Joseph, Jeff Koch, Data, Jeff Koch, John Hurd, safety, Sherrod, Derek, and policy, Brent, Riley, and Dr. Joseph. Is that correct? Okay, I think we got it.
Thank you. Okay, the next order is the MSBA delegate. Does anybody have a desire to interface with MSBA or the other local boards?
You want to be the MSBA delegate, Jeff?
Yeah, I've done it before. I've done it before, and I think that's a good fit to know some folks, so I would volunteer that.
Okay.
Any other, anybody else interested? Okay. All right. And then the review of the policy, that's the financial disclosure and interest. I'll sign that. Do we need to read that to everyone?
I think everyone has...
Everyone?
It's important to be familiar with it.
The degrees of interaction with the school while you're on the board, that's one of the things that can cause a removal is having undue conflicts. That's the policy in there, and I guess there's no action on it, but just to bring it up to be aware, we probably got 100 policies, but that's one to read and be aware of.
And then there's a signature page at the end of that that each person will sign that they reviewed it.
Got you. Is that...
That's the same form as every...you're correct.
Yeah. No changes there, but it's an annual requirement.
So before you leave tonight, sign them.
Okay. All right, we can move on to the reports.
And the first thing that you have are celebrations. And you have a copy of this under right there to the right. And so, and then Derek will put these up on the screen as you go through our celebration.
All right, so first celebration up is the theater students. Joplin High School were excited to perform the comedy Play On by Rick Abbott. Production's hilarious story of a theater group trying desperately to put on a play in spite of maddening interference from snobbish author who keeps revising the script. The JHS casting crew did a wonderful job. And the next, the high school students in ninth to 12th grade were invited to show off their creative writing skills with personal narrative, poetry, or short story entries written in a theme, uncertainty. Contest was sponsored by MSSU and the Joplin Globe, and we had two JHS writers that are congratulated. Elizabeth Williams, she's a senior, she took second place in the personal narrative. And Morgan Cravens, also a senior, she took third place in poetry. So congratulations, ladies. All right, and then students from Joplin, Webb City, Carthage, Carl Junction, Neo Show compete each year in the Central Ozark Conference Art Show. JHS students earn their share of the honors. So first place, Candice Sexton, she took first place in digital art. Jay Gubra, she took third place in digital art. Kyla Chambers took second place in digital art and third place in water media painting. Anthony Fry took first place in 3D mixed media. Colleen Neta Inet, she took third place in graphite drawing. Noah Gibran, he took third place in printmaking. And then the Joplin High School Science Research Course exposes a select group of highly qualified students to the rigorous research process. Students must be resilient, have the ability to work independently, and have a strong work ethic. Again, this year, our research students have made us proud. So Audrey Christenberry, her project was the effects of habitual caffeine consumption on stress in lab mice. MSSU Regional Science Fair in chemistry and biochemistry, she took first place. Missouri Junior Academy of Sciences, she got a one rating and advanced to state. Next, we have Benjamin Kolkebrek. His project affects the sodium nitrate potassium dihydrogen on wild cabbage and silica sand. So at the MSSU Regional Science Fair in the plant science area, he took first place. And the Missouri Junior Academy of Science, he got a two rating. So congratulations. Couple more. Kaya Pandery, her project, a longitudinal study of Turkey Creek Spring River watershed in Missouri to establish baseline concentration of microplastics. At the MSSU Regional Science Fair in the earth and environmental sciences, she took first place in Missouri Junior Academy of Science, two rating. Karen Handy, her project was naturally derived versus synthetically manufactured antibiotics to affect on the gut microbiome. MSSU Regional Science Fair for cellular molecular and microbiology, she took first place. And for the Missouri Junior Academy of Science, the rating, she received a rating and advanced to state. And final in this category, Isabella Sotler, her project does pseudoephedrine stunt growth and nematodes. MSSU Regional Science Fair cellular molecular and microbiology, she took second place. And the Missouri Junior Academy of Science, she had a rating and advanced to state. So congratulations on those science awards. And then we had a big activity last week at Dover Hill Elementary. I'm breaking. It was a glorious event. It was this weekend with the snow. A glorious event that was well attended by students from West Central Columbia, as well as many community stakeholders that were committed to bringing student safety and equitable learning to all students in the district. It was a great event and a lot of support from the community. We thank you all that were able to attend. The next one, the hard work of the JHS Winter Guard Team earned them first place at the State Mid-Continental Color Guard Association Competition. Board of Education would like to present certificates to the team members and recognize coaches Christina Leonard and Jessica Woods.
Thanks. I'm proud of you. Bye.
Great. We've got a lot, but we want to take the moment of recognition. So as I call your name, come up here, we'll give you a certificate, we'll get a picture, and congratulations. Alexandria Greenus.
Alex. I'll get it.
Sorry.
Alexander.
I got yours. Rachel Nelson. Alexis Connor. Morgan Shaver. Amy Dowling.
She cut it to her time.
Not here, not good. Axel Meredith. Holly Ducey. Alexandria Rooks. Danielle Henry. Shiloh Allen. Not here, sit there.
Let's have this again.
Ezra Ramblin, I can't hear him.
Yay.
And Jalen McGill. Congratulations, all of you. And one more, the Joplin High School Sound Dimension, they were grand champions at this weekend's Carthage Invitational.
Awesome. Good news.
Thank you all. All right, board safety and security meeting report. I can share that as well. We had an opportunity to meet and review the capital outlay proposal that is in our board packet tonight. That included assigning most critical expenditures to invest this abatement, safety equipment, door and window lock upgrades, asphalt and concrete repair inspections, district leechers, and Columbia crack monitoring, along with a fire system replacement at North Middle School, and then the total facilities capital outlay of 2.8 million. And then we have a couple other notes to share as well. The Risk Management Safety Committee, they had some good news to report for our workers' comp modification rate. A rating of 1.0 means your average within your category. We had a rating of .93, which means we're 7% better than average, and that went from .93 to .91. So we're going in the right direction. You're 9% better than the average school in our category. So that's a good decrease, and that also has a large impact on the premiums that we pay for our workers' comp. So, and more importantly, that means we've reduced the opportunities for safety concerns and issues. So thank you to the team that worked hard on that, and they still have some more work that they're working on. And then we shared progress on the safety director's goals for 2021. Jim Holenschel shared that he was concerned, not concerned, but he was looking to improve the teacher and staff members' competence in our safety measures, and he showed the 2016 confidence level versus the 2021. And so for the fire rating, what to do in case of a fire, went from 99% to 99.4, which is a small improvement, but it's very high. For tornado, 98.5 to 99.4. Earthquake went from 83.3 to 94%. Confidence of intruder went from 80.4 to 96, and confidence in active shooter went from 70.7 to 90%. So that goes to show that the safety concerns and the goals that he's working on are achieving success. We did change the changes to the parent pickup and drop off at Stapleton. There's some safety concerns because of busing in the street and having to cross the street. We reviewed those options and made some changes. And then we...they already have had a safety summit from Dover Hill Elementary School to talk about things that are important to be included in the project as it begins. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any, but it was well detailed in that meeting. Okay, thank you. Next up, superintendent's reports. Dr. Moss.
Yes, and the first thing we have is Ms. Gloria Turner, and I saw her, I think, somewhere back there. Gloria, and Gloria, you're going to first present the committee recommendation for teacher grants, is that correct? Okay, and you have that list, because I have the list as well, so, okay, Gloria.
A few years ago, the Joplin School Foundation was looking for ways to help teachers in the classroom, and we wanted to help teachers specifically, we were wanting to try new and program new projects to enhance the curriculum in classrooms. And we were thinking about the idea of giving grants of under $2,000 to fund some of these projects. And the grants have funded so far a greenhouse at an elementary school, a program at one school to teach all the students sign language, because they had some students there with hearing, that were hearing impaired, and they wanted to be able to communicate. And so a teacher applied for a grant to help teach all the kids the sign language. We purchased, the teachers have, with special cameras, a t-shirt, printing press, a number of things. And this year's grant recipients are Abby Dur from South Middle School. Abby, are you there? Okay, here. Why don't you come up here? And Laura Stamper from East. Brianna Chafin from Royal Heights. Whitney Cummings from Cecil Floyd. Rebecca Miller from the Earl Childhood Center. And then we also decided, we had some teachers that were applying for some smaller projects, and so this year, we decided we could give some mini grants. And one employee in particular from Columbia Elementary, Samantha Jordan, received two mini grants from us this year. So these are your...
All right.
The teachers have to fill out quite a few questionnaires for us to let us know that they're trying something really different and not just a random question.
And Ms. Gloria, before you sit down, I think you also have some presentations for our teacher and support staff nominees.
Several years ago, Virginia Lass made a generous donation to the Joplin Schools Foundation in memory of her husband Fred, who was a longtime Joplin attorney. And Virginia was a graduate of Joplin High School and educator as well. She gave us specific instructions that the money was to be used to recognize an outstanding teacher each year. And we've been fortunate to be able to honor several teachers throughout the last few years. This year's Teacher of the Year award goes to Emily Pierce, a special education teacher at Jefferson Elementary. It comes with a $500 check. Likewise, the foundation chose to honor Support Staff of the Year, and this year's award goes to Kathy Marins, the secretary of Laura Hottick's elementary and...
Thank you, and thank you for supporting our staff.
And I might also add, before we move on to our next item, I got to be part of what felt like the Publishers Clearinghouse Price Patrol as we went around to surprise ambush Ms. Pierce and Ms. Marins, and the love and care in those rooms and in those settings was palpable. And it was not hard to tell in an instant why they advanced to be chosen as the teacher and support staff of the year, so I want to extend my personal congratulations to you very well.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that is our next item in construction or EOS, because I have a little bit of...
EOS.
EOS. All right, Mr. Nichols Wall is with us tonight. We have written some about the Equal Opportunity Schools Program in your Thursday updates. And Mr. Wall, we're honored that you are here with us tonight to tell us more about the program. I might add that we are his first school in person to visit, I think, since COVID shutdowns.
Since March 11.
So you came to us from Indianapolis today, is that right? All right, well, welcome, and we're eager to hear your presentation about EOS.
Thank you so much for this time, Dr. Moss. Chair Cook, thanks for having me here today, and board members. And I had the great pleasure of meeting with Dr. Moss and her team, leadership team, to talk with them about access to opportunity, equity of opportunity and access. I was in Dr. Moss's chair for 16 years, 11 of those in Chicagoland, and five of those just outside of Indianapolis. Three years ago, Equal Opportunity Schools asked me to become a superintendent and resident. The first superintendent resident was from Missouri, from Columbia, Dr. Chris Belcher. And Dr. Belcher has since retired from EOS after he retired from Columbia City, and so I took his spot as regional director now, and I have the great pleasure of serving districts from Minnesota down to Florida. We have a number of partners in this, in the fine state of... Okay, I think that, is our next item construction or EOS? Because I have a little.
EOS.
EOS. All right, Mr. Nichols Wall is with us tonight. We have written some about the Equal Opportunity Schools Program in your Thursday updates. And, Mr. Wall, we're honored that you are here with us tonight to tell us more about the program. I might add that we are his first school in person to visit, I think, since COVID shutdowns.
Since March 11.
So you came to us from Indianapolis today, is that right?
Yes, correct.
All right, well, welcome. And we're eager to hear your presentation about EOS.
Thank you so much for this time, Dr. Moss. Chair Cook, thanks for having me here today, and Board members. And I had the great pleasure of meeting with Dr. Moss and her team, leadership team, to talk with them about access to opportunity, equity of opportunity and access. I was in Dr. Moss's chair for 16 years, 11 of those in Chicagoland, and five of those just outside of Indianapolis. Three years ago, Equal Opportunity Schools asked me to become a superintendent in residence. The first superintendent resident was from Missouri, from Columbia, Dr. Chris Belcher. And Dr. Belcher has since retired from EOS after he retired from Columbia City. And so I took his spot as Regional Director now, and I have the great pleasure of serving districts from Minnesota down to Florida. We have a number of partners in this, in the fine state of Missouri. A little bit about EOS. We are a nonprofit out of Seattle. We have, I live in Indianapolis, as I said, we have members that live in Missouri on our team, but the home office is a nonprofit in Seattle. It was conceived 11 years ago by a, an AP teacher who was teaching AP, and he noticed that there were very few students of color and very few students from low-income families in his AP courses. When he went to the school counselor to probe into that and ask why that was, he was met with resistance. So he took the initiative to start and form the nonprofit Equal Opportunity Schools. That was his, that was his mission, and now it's our mission. And our mission is very clear. We are here to partner schools across the United States, and we are now in partnering with over 700 high schools in 32 states. In Missouri, we have partnered with, and partnered with now, Columbia Public Schools, Confluence Charter Schools, Ferguson Floriscent Schools, Liberty Public School 53, Park Hill School District, Parkway C2 School District, and Springfield Public Schools. So we have a footprint in Missouri. We're very proud of these partnerships. Dr. Cook has applied for a matching grant. We give out about 100 matching grants annually. We want to bring on at least 100 new partners every year. We cannot give out all the, we cannot award all the grantees that apply for application for this. We want to make sure that we are vetting districts that truly have equity of opportunity and access at the heart of their mission, at the heart of what they do, because we want to give them money to do this work. So as a former superintendent, I have a passion for this work and was very honored when EOS asked me to be part of their world, and it's an honor to be here tonight. I'm just going to go through a slide deck, but I want this to be a conversation. If you have any questions, let me know. Like I said, I met with the team, we met yesterday, we met a week ago too. But it's exciting to be here and exciting to look at the opportunities for equity and access partnering with, with Joplin Missouri Schools. So, as I said, we're on a mission, and you can see on the slide deck, we are here to ensure that students of color and low-income students have equitable access to America's most academically rigorous high school programs. And in your case, that's AP and dual credit. We want to make sure barriers are broken down, create absolute opportunities for students of color and low-income students, leverage data and analytics so that you have a high-quality partnership to help you find these students and build and sustain adult capacity in your high schools for equitable learning environments. Now one thing I told Dr. Moss and her team is, the partnerships that we have forged with over 700 high schools actually informs, because we've been asked, why just high schools? That's the mission, that's our mission as a nonprofit. But it actually informs equity work throughout the district. You're a K-12 district. I had a variety of districts in my career as a superintendent. In Illinois, they have K-12 districts, they have high school districts, they have elementary districts. I've had the honor to serve in all those capacities. You have the unique, and you, and Missouri is all K-12, but this can inform your equity work throughout your system. At our scale delivery system provides real-time data, and I'll show you some of that data that can be very meaningful to your school counselors, to your principals, to your teachers, on each student in your high school. Dynamic student-level insights and equity-focused professional learning. The why of the work is, we know from our surveying over 2.5 million students across the United States, that there are 750,000 students, low-income students and students of color, in our high schools today, capable but missing from rigorous courses. So we know the why of the work. We also know there's a gap for black students and Latino students in college completion. This is the data that we've surfaced over 11 years, surveying our portfolio partners. And as you can see, Asian students are 71% likely to complete post-secondary college, black students 23%, Hispanic-Latino students 21%, and white students at 44%. So there's another piece of the why of the work that we have. Story is no different in AP and IB. White students are 1.3 times more likely than Latinx students to be in an AP class, and 1.8 times more likely than black students to be in AP. So we know there's a significant, significant why across our country and our high schools. And US has gone very deep. This number is now over 700 with the partners for this year. We're in over 211 districts. Now we added another state this year, 32 states. We've interviewed and surveyed and studied academic records for all of the administrators we've worked with, over 90,000 staff and over, and 2.9 million students. So, we want to listen to the students, we do, we listen to the students and the high school teachers to inform our work. Because, as I said, as a building principal and a superintendent, the greatest agent of change for our students are the teachers in the classroom, because they're the closest agent of change for this. Our national impact, as I said, now we're over 700, we're in 32 states, over 43,000. First-time AP and IB students have been a result of the partnerships in our, in our portfolio. The other thing too, that I pushed back on three years ago when they approached me, it's not just about filling up, in your case, AP and dual credit courses, it's about making sure they succeed. We maintain a 75% passing rate on AP exams and IB exams. Dual credit does not have exam, but we maintain that success. And in many cases, we elevate that success. This is just an example of what we do. We're going to look at your data in just a minute, real data. This is one of our partners, pre-partnership, and you're going to see this for your Joplin students here in just a minute. And we take a look at students, juniors and seniors in a snapshot you're going to see in just a minute on Joplin High School. And we look at median high-income students, white and Asian. We've actually broken that down this year, we changed that. In this case, pre-partnership Kent High School needed to find 120 low-income, white and Asian students, 16 Hispanic-Latino, high, medium-high income, 92 low-income, in black African-American students, 11 median-high income, and 62 low-income, and then low-income all other races, 49. So this is a gap analysis that we do. We take your data and put it into meaningful information. This high school, after one year in the partnership with us, resulted in, we found 435 students, we were looking at finding 350. And the term I use a lot is "all boats rise to the incoming tide", and we maintain an AP/IB pass rate for that high school. We did not, their pass rate did not go down, even though we increased the number of students in those courses to 435. 1% of high schools in the United States can call themselves an equitable high school. By that I mean, across all the subgroups, they can say they have equitable representation in their rigorous courses. As I told Dr. Moss and her team yesterday, we don't talk to partners and say, we want to get every single student an AP and dual credit. That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, we want to enter into a partnership where you have equitable, equitable representation in your AP and dual credit here at Joplin High School. And we'll look at your data in just a moment. The how of the work is the work that we do. I know, and when I was in Dr. Moss's seat, that was something on my mind, I wanted to make sure that we expanded student opportunities, we made sure we have equitable access for students in all of our courses. But to be very blunt, as a superintendent and as an assistant superintendent, and as a building principal, you don't have time to be that, to be your only item on your desk every day. You wish you would, but you don't. The fact is, you don't. You get assigned a partnership director. A person, and pre-COVID was boots on the ground, post-COVID, during COVID, like we are, we pivoted, we can do it all virtual. And then post-COVID, it'll be boots on the ground. We have partnership directors right here in the Midwest that would come and service your school, your high school. And these are people, we're a partnership, we're not a product. The partnership director will do process management for you, stakeholder engagement, student-teacher outreach, leadership and equity coaching. They'll help you form an equity team at your high school, specific plans to do outreach for AP and IB, and in your case, dual credit, and then best practice in this approach. These are real people, and I've actually met every one of those people on that slide deck. Year one, let's say that you say, year one, we want to do this. We'd come in, do data collection in the fall. We'd have a leadership orientation meeting before students, every come in the building, all your leaders would meet with the partnership director and go through what is, was involved in the process. We'd form an equity team at your high school, and we would take existing teams that you have and amplify those. And we would survey every one of your students and teachers at your high school. That's very important, because as you think back, we listen to that student and teacher voice. Some of the survey questions we do with the student survey themes, we ask your students directly, what are the barriers? Ask them, student voice, what are the barriers? What expectations do they have? What are their dreams and aspirations? Do they feel like they belong at the high school? Outreach recommendations, we ask every one of your teachers, would you want to be an AP or a dual-credit teacher in your case? Ideas on feedback on the program? Reasons they believe why students are not participating at equitable rate, and want to know if they want to be on the equity teams? We create outreach plans, student recruitment, student targets, student list, and student inside cards, which is, I think it's the gold standard in looking holistically at every student in our high schools. And we'll develop the very specific equity pathway report, specific to your high school, based upon what your teachers and your students are saying about your high school. You know, what we've found in the partnership too, this is just a couple snapshots to just highlight that we really listen to our teachers and our students. The AP/IB equity gap isn't vague or insurmountable. Students are literally sitting 20 feet away from these courses, they just don't know they're there. What we've found, I know this is very hard, small slide to reach, staff who report classes are challenging, are very challenging across programs. If you go down this list, what this is saying is, and this is over 90,000 high school teachers we've asked, in their opinion, AP and IB classes are challenging and will prepare students for post-secondary. As you go down, dual credit drops down a little bit, career and CTE drops down a little bit, honor classes drop down a little bit. So if you're wondering why we're focusing on AP/IB, and we used to not recognize dual credit. I came on board three years ago, and Dr. Belcher and I, as former superintendent said, got to recognize dual credit. There's just no reason not to. So we do now, and I'm so happy we do. But those are the three rigorous courses we focus on getting students into, because not only do teachers say they matriculate in a higher ed in a positive way, universities say that too. Staff also report that classes prepare students well or very well for college, and you can see, it goes down in the same order, AP, IB, and dual credit. We ask all the students, again, this is over, this is 2.9 million student surveys, student college career aspirations. Across the country, 92% of students want to attain a two- or four-year degree. In our portfolio, we have found that 89% of the students surveyed, 2.9, want to go to post-secondary two- or four-year colleges. And you can see, students aspire to go to college with personal and altruistic aspirations. They want to become an educated citizen that can contribute to our society, which is actually the genesis of public schools. That's why public schools in the United States were started. So we would have educated and literate informed citizens, so they actually vote in a representative republic. So it's affirming to see that in our students today. They still want to be that. They want to gain skills that they can use in a job that helps others. And they want to learn things that will help them make a positive impact on the world. We listen to our staff, we ask our staff across the country what they think about the students. They think that 68% would like to go to college, and 65% will graduate from a two- or four-year college. Compare that to the 89% of the students that say they want to go to college. So there's a disconnect. So in the partnership, we work very diligently with your teachers to help them shift their mindset towards all students in a very supportive and collaborative way. But you can see the mismatch, but that's based upon listening to students and staff across the country. This, this statistic really made me jump back three years ago. This is surveying over 90,000 high school teachers, asking them, what do they think students, student attributes portray to become successful in AP? What qualities are students showing them in their classrooms that they think show that they should be a very positive experience in AP? Anybody want to take a stab at these? These are student qualities, student predictors of success.
Effort, desire, commitment.
There you go. You're all over it right there on your first board meeting.
I've had four children, so I've had this conversation.
Well, you're nailing it. Anybody else? I'm impressed.
Turning their homework, do their assignments, I mean, those simple.
Now, before I hit the button and show you this, I had three districts where, and this is before US existed, in Illinois or Indiana, where they had, you'd have a certain GPA to get in an AP course or IB course, you had to have the prerequisites to get in, you had to have a teacher recommendation, and you had to have a school counselor recommendation. Motivation, subject interests, teacher quality, top three. So you're on it. You get, if I had a gold star, I'd give it to you, but I just say, you paid attention to your kids. And it sounds like they paid attention to you. Prerequisites, GPA and test scores, lowest predictor of student success, but many times, the biggest barriers for students to even get in these courses. So it's, it's really interesting when you start listening to teachers and students who really are in their classrooms every day. This, to me, is absolutely the gold standard in, if you really want to know your students. Now, you'll get this for every student in your high school. What it is, is student information garnered from their surveys. Also, teacher information garnered from their surveys, impact, and that will be populate the student inside card. Now, this is accessed electronically, okay? So this is not like a baseball card. You can go in and query it and pull it out. So Chloe Adamson, you got her GPA and your test scores. Now all of a sudden, you got a name with a face. We ask every one of your students, what do they want to be? Chloe wants to be a teacher. We ask every one of your students, do they have a trusted adult in the building? That's highly significant. When that comes up blank, that's going to be a guiding force for your equity team, because you'll be able to query in your high school principal, your school counselors, Dr. Moss, you'll be able to query into the portal. Tell me how many students at Joplin High School are saying they don't have a trusted adult in that building, which to me is highly significant, because we know students feel like they belong if they have at least one trusted adult in the building. We ask if their, in study skills or another, whatever your, you may have student resource time, whatever's specific to Joplin High. We ask the teachers, those three apples, we ask every one of your teachers, tell us about a student that you think should be in AP and in your case, dual credit. Three teachers are recommending and advocating for Chloe. I encourage our partners to share this with the students too. This is about them. So often in education, we talk about students, we publish their test scores, but we never involve them in the process, what that means. We share this, you share this with your students. Think of the power if Chloe knows three teachers want her to be, or are advocating for her to be in an AP or dual-credit course. Her interests, she likes, she likes social studies and history. We work with Carol Dweck out of Stanford in the growth mindset, which I'm sure many of you are, you're aware of, because we want to know from your students, do they have growth mindset? What that means is, how they respond to the survey questions will indicate if they're indicating they have growth mindset. Chloe does. She's got grit, determination, she has community leadership and academic strategies. Again, as I said, we ask every student, what are your barriers? Why are you not in AP and dual credit? The top two reasons across 2.9 million students, no adult encouragement and lack of knowledge. They don't know what they don't know. And she wants to get into college, and she's concerned her current courses are not going to be, you know, rigorous enough to get her into college. We ask every one of your students at Joplin High, give us a narrative, tell us about your experience. In Chloe's case, she was bullied early on, early on in her high school career, but now she's going to be determined to be the first person from her height, of her family to graduate from college. She just wants to take an AP English course to see how she does. Now, I had the great privilege in Chicagoland of shaking the hand of first-generation high school graduates. Dr. Moss, I don't know if you've had that experience, but it is the most moving and humbling experience of my 34 years in education. When you have a student walk up to you and ask you, you know, they say, Dr. Wall, would you, would you take a picture of me with my grandparents and my parents, because I'm the first one in my family to have a diploma? That's moving. That happens in our partnership here too. You will, you will move and change life trajectory of kids in Joplin High School as a result of the partnership. I'm absolutely convinced of it. And it's one of those things that you just, once you change that life trajectory, the family blossoms, the students blossom. So I'm a pause here. This, to me, is absolutely the gold standard in asking students what they want to be, what are their dreams, asking your teachers about the students. There's, there's no way, and I love school counselors, but the national average of school counselor to student ratio in the United States is 1 to 350. There's no way we can expect our school counselors across the US to identify, know the aspirations, know the dreams, know the interests of 350 students on their caseload. the aspirations, know the dreams, know the interests of 350 students on their caseload. We're asking all your teachers to help with that. And we have an electronically accessible document that can really inform the outreach for your school, for your students, and for your teachers, and for your school counselors.
Do you do this inside card for all students or just for that targeted group?
All of them, every student in your high school. All your students are actually what you're targeting. All boats rise in the incoming tide, your popular, all your student population will rise and be in these courses. It's for every student in your high school. This is one of our partners. I actually know Ron, he's actually helps us out with California schools. He said all students graduating from his district are not going to be doctors, lawyers, or even go to college. Yet, all students deserve an opportunity. We are the gatekeepers to that opportunity. And we need to give them keys to doors of opportunity, our students, keys to doors of opportunity that they didn't even know existed. And I firmly believe we do that. I'll pause here, any questions? Then I'm gonna actually show you your data of your juniors and seniors today.
Dr. Wall, first and foremost, thank you for being here tonight. I work in higher ed, so I get some of these things and see students all the time who aren't necessarily prepared, okay, to come to the collegiate setting. So is there a college readiness component to this? I know we have those in place at the high school, but is there anything that your program does in addition to that to help ensure students are ready to go on to college?
What we do, our mission is very clear. We want to increase the number of students of color and low-income students in your AP and IB courses. But what we're doing simultaneously is building those supports with your teachers and with your leadership of your high school, so students succeed. So you could call that college readiness, we call it getting ready for those students. We prep you, we make sure your teachers are ready, make sure the students are ready, and build those bridges in the first year because in the partnership in the fall, we're going to be doing the surveys, equity pathway report, building capacity in your teachers, building capacity in your students. So when they're enrolled for the fall of 2022, all those supports will be in place. And the ongoing professional development with your teachers is part of this partnership as well. The partnership directors will work very closely with your teachers to make sure that students are succeeding, that they're going in the portal, looking at the outreach, making sure they're tracking how students are doing. So those supports are there. We wouldn't, I wouldn't call it college career readiness, but all those supports are in there so they succeed. And we know if they succeed, as we saw in AP and IB, they're going to be more successful in college.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is data on the next slide?
I think you're pulling up the second piece of those attachments, Eric. And then I also failed to mention that Dr. Gilbert is with us tonight. He's back there. And so, Dr. G, if you want to come on up as well, that was my mistake to not call you up because I know that we've talked about this and had meetings about it, and Dr. G's very much on board with this initiative as well.
So what we do, this is pre-partnership. We will do a complimentary opportunity analysis of your juniors and seniors, which we do for any high school in the United States. But this is just your juniors and seniors, a snapshot in your representation in your AP and your dual credit courses, okay? You're gonna be my scroller. Basically, what this says is everything I just said to you, so you can keep going. Okay, now, up a little more. Okay. This is your students, and this first slide is about AP. How does Joplin schools compare? We take, this is your data, we put in usable information, okay? So again, juniors and seniors, we break it down by student population. Students of color and low income make up 53% of your high school. Meeting high income, white Asian students, 47%. Students by low income, we have 44%, and meeting high income, 56%. So it's about 50/50. Then we break down your population by race and ethnicity, and you can see that breakdown. Just hold right there, please. And then we take the upper level courses, in your case, this is AP, okay? So your upper level courses, you have of your juniors and seniors, 11% of your juniors and seniors in AP. 89% are not. And then we take your high school and put it in a scattergram with the 700 high schools in our portfolio. See that kind of a burgundy dot down there? That's where you're at. X-axis is percentage of students of color and low income, and then the Y-axis is students of color and low income in upper level courses. We obviously want to raise that burgundy dot up to increase that percentage within the portfolio. So you can see where the 700 are and where you guys are in that scattergram. Okay, you can scroll down a little more. Thank you. Then we do, I showed you about a partner up here, we do, it's a gap analysis. We set a benchmark for you around 50%. That can be adjusted in the partnership next year, wherever you and your leadership want it to be. But for this snapshot, it's at 50%. Right now, you do not have a demographic at 50%. And we go from left to right, we've got your meeting high income Asian students, and below you see the N number, how many? The N is 17, six low income. Moving left to right, your African-American students, you have 18 meeting high income and 36 low income. Continuing to move left, Hispanic Latino, you have 46 high income, 49 low income, and moving across into the multiracial additional races, and then your white students, meeting high income and low income. Now, what we target, and you can see up there, 11th and 12th grade targeted students to add to get to equity, in this example is 280. You already have 31 students in the targeted area, students of color and students in low income. Now, interestingly, I told Dr. Moss this, you guys are an outlier because you have gaps in your meeting high income Asian students and your meeting high income white students. And that means that that number's going to be significantly more than that because you have 539 meeting high income white students, and you have the 17 meeting high income Asian students, but the big number is your meeting high income white students. So that 280 is significantly more. Now, what I'm going to tell you is, as I said, all boats will rise in the incoming tide. That number for your meeting high income white students will increase in the partnership.
And just a question, and Dr. G, maybe you know, between advanced placement and dual credit, that we have more students doing the dual credit than the advanced placement? So this is, I'll say, underrepresenting those that are taking challenging courses?
Well, we've got dual credit too.
Okay. Because in the top, I just said AP, so.
Now, this slide's AP. You're gonna get dual credit in just a minute.
And these are just juniors and seniors, there are sophomores.
In the partnership, we'll do your whole high school to show you where your sophomores are, et cetera. Scroll down just a little bit. We also take a look at your exam-taking rate, which is high, 85%, which doesn't surprise me because you have 11, only 11% of your high school students in AP. So that should be a high percentage taking the exams. Your exam pass rate is at 50. In our portfolio, we want it to be at 75. So we want to increase the pass rate of that as well. So what we're seeing, the average in our 700 high schools is 75% pass rate. So we want to emphasize that as well and increase that. And now we're gonna get you dual credit. Okay, that top, that's, all that on the top there is the same data, but only difference in this is the upper level course represented by dual credit for your juniors and seniors is 14%, which is up from 11. So that's to your question, yes, there are more students, and you can scroll down a little bit more, you can see where your burgundy dot is. It's in a similar space that your AP was.
But shouldn't you add the 1411 to get 25% of the students in those courses? Because it's the same population of students.
Not necessarily. Not all the students are going to be in dual credit.
Well, no, they're opposite sets.
There could be overlap, but for this exercise, it's just a snapshot of what you have got in having your courses.
We wondered that as well. This is the free opportunity chart as we're exploring the program. I think nevertheless, it shows opportunity and that we would be good candidates to consider this program. And I wondered that myself, Jeff, is how many of those are overlap? Because sometimes you'll have a student, well, I want dual credit and this, this, and this, and I also want to take this AP class. So it may double up in some cases, but I asked him the very same question when I first saw it because I wanted to be at 25%.
I think we kept pushing the dual credit the last five years, seven years, and so we have a lot of students in dual credit. We didn't encourage as much the advanced placement, especially for people that can get one-year, two-year done of a college credit.
The more you get in both, the more you're gonna give the students a leg up going into college.
Yeah.
Just a question on the source data, where does that come from?
You guys.
So how do we provide the income brackets?
Students of low income, students of free and reduced lunch.
So that's what that's used to correlate? Gotcha, okay.
And there's just, there's no personally identifiable information you give to this report. This is just numbers.
Sure.
No student names, this is just numbers, okay? And then we did opportunity analysis, gap analysis for your dual credit. Again, to get to equity, we would need to find 262 11th and 12th graders across from left to right again, in these demographic areas from Asian, meeting high income, low income, African-American, meeting high income, low income, Hispanic Latino across. Again, you have an outlier in your meeting high income white student population where you have underrepresentation of your meeting high income white students in dual credit as well. So to get that, we're talking, take that 262 and add, you have 539 minus 109. That's an additional 430 students, meeting high income, white students. Plus 262 is 692. So we believe that you guys will be fantastic partners and would love to continue the conversation with you. Any questions on the opportunity analysis?
Quick question, are there, this is probably for Dr. Moss or Dr. Gilbert to answer this, are there fees associated, there are fees associated with dual credit, is that correct?
Yes, there's tuition to get the actual credit on the transcript. We have been fortunate, I believe, Carrie, you can speak to this, but we had a, was it through economic development? We had a grant for a time that paid tuition to like free and reduced lunch students. Sue Dase tracked that quite a bit with her work. And then when that grant went away, we committed district dollars to help with that. So when we talk about barriers to taking a dual credit course or taking that AP exam, we do have funds set aside to help with that. Again, I think sometimes part of the barrier is like Nick was saying, is the knowledge, lack of knowledge or lack of the belt encouragement, but that's a good question.
I think that's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if you're asking lower-income students to participate in these courses and providing those opportunities.
I agree, and if you haven't already, that's a leg up. The other thing we do, the partnership directors will do, working with you, there'll be outreach to your parents too. They'll show you the best practices of reaching out to your parents, educate them, because, you know, again, people don't know what they don't know. There's no offense to this, it's just about education, that's what we're in the business to do, and breaking down barriers so there's equitable access. And again, to restate, our goal in partnership is to not get every single student in every high school in AP, IB, and dual credit. It's to make sure doors are open, barriers are broken down, information is disseminated, there's access, equitable access, so that the participation in these courses is equitable across the suburbs. Dr. Moss, thank you for letting me come out here today.
Well, we're honored that you made the trip. Thank you. I've enjoyed our meetings thus far. And Dr. G, do you have anything you would like to add?
You know, I just, I think it's a good opportunity for our kids, you know, to level up some of those areas that we don't have, you know, they're deficient in that. And I was surprised to see, you know, where the deficiencies lie, you know? It's like, it's not necessarily, which is good, you know, as many low-income Caucasian kids not taking it as anything else. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to shore up all those deficiencies.
Very good. Well, as we said in your item, we're not asking you to vote on this this evening, but we did want to make sure that you had a lot of information about it, as well as what we've written in our Thursday updates. It's very possible that we will be bringing an action item to you in May concerning this program.
Dr. Moss, honored to be here and commend your whole team for taking a look at this. Not all leadership teams would do this, but as I said, going through my 16 years as superintendent, when it's wrong, make it right. It's all we can do, and we're here to help you do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you feel better.
Hey, I think the next item we have is our construction update. I see Aaron Height and Dave Bennett in the back.
Okay, real quick, I promise. Even though it was snowing today, we did get some work.
There's somebody up there digging up trees before meeting.
So I'm gonna start on Kelsey Norman first. Footies are complete. We're actually pouring the Slap Monday, 4:30 a.m., so if anybody wants to join, you're more than welcome.
Bring your rubber boots.
That's right. We need some laborers. So load-bearing CMU is gonna start after that. Structure is a load-bearing CMU structure. And then it'll take approximately three weeks for the CMU to go up. After that, structural steel begins. Structural steel is already on site. If you remember, that was a big issue at the beginning of this project. We actually put the project on hold because the lead time for structural steel, bar joists, it's here, so we have it. That being said, that should start on May 17th, and then current final completion is slated for October 20th. So we've gained a little bit, about a week and a half so far.
Awesome.
So that's Kelsey Norman. On to Dover Hill. As you said, erosion control and tree removal started today, so picked a great day to start that. We've got topsoil scheduled to be stripped and stockpiled the remainder of this week and the first part of next. D11 dozer. I don't know if anybody has ever heard of the D11 dozer.
Big one.
A big one. Basically, a mining dozer. It will arrive on Wednesday next week. It actually arrives, it's so large, it has to be shipped on three semis. So it's gonna, scheduled to arrive on Wednesday, they're gonna reassemble it, and then hopefully get started on Friday or the worst-case Monday of the following week. When you see that, there is going to be a lot of action going on. It takes 42 gallons per hour to run that thing. When it starts, when it starts, they run it continuously. The operator is so tall, the operator stays in the cab to eat his lunch, does not exit the machine. That being said, I hope to run it. Dr. Moss is gonna get on there too.
When's that coming in?
It's Wednesday of next week is the slated delivery date. So pretty cool. So we're hoping to start major earthwork on May 3rd. That's when we really start pushing. On top of that, the waterline bore, so we've got to get a waterline across Main Street. We've got a bore underneath. That will start hopefully next week. They're in the process of material procurement right now. So on to phase two. So it's due out by the design team next week, hopefully early next week. Crossing will take approximately one week to make bid packages and get that out to bid. We give a minimum of three weeks for the bidders to look at it and give us bids, and we're hoping around the last week of May, depending on when we can get that out, the last week of May will be our actual bid. So that'll be a big, big day. So that is my update. So that is my update. When the, when the trees started falling down, I was actually there today. I knew that we were gonna start getting some phone calls, but it's a good, good phone call to have. Any questions?
Call me when that comes in. I wanna see who's standing next to that thing.
It's, it's huge. So the blade itself, most people know how big a regular, I say a regular, a D6 dozer. You know, it's probably the width of these tables. The blade itself is hauled on a single semi. It's so heavy. It's 24 feet wide and 10 foot tall.
Oh my.
When it pushes, it flat pushes a lot of soil.
It's got ripper and everything on it?
It can actually rip rock. And that's one of the reasons why they're bringing it here.
It's gonna have the ripper on it?
Yes. The ripper, the ripper is actually shipped separately as well. They have to get it cranked out to reassemble it. So it's gonna be
That's an adult Tomcat toy right there.
It certainly is. And then so, on steroids.
Yes.
So very excited, very, very excited.
Thank you for the update.
You're very welcome.
Seriously, call me. I gotta see this.
I'd never have seen 11 myself either.
I use it.
Yeah.
I got my own hard hat. I can get on inside.
Awesome. I'll meet you out there.
Call me, seriously.
Yep. Will do, I will.
Gotta bring out the kid in you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, and then we're gonna move from that to health insurance and dental insurance reports. He said, is the ripper on it? And then I looked at dental, it's like, ooh.
I can see that.
Okay, the, the health and dental report, this marks the three fourths of the way through the school year. So, um, as of the end of March, we'd spent $5,356,016.14 of our 7.4 million budget, uh, which is about 72%. So we're kind of right on where, where we thought we would be. You will notice, um, Eric, if you would go down to the, like that third page, the monthly activity of the health report, uh, you'll notice the revenues there. Let's see, go back like three pages there. Right, right there. Um, the revenues are a little higher than what you've seen on, on prior months. And in the month of March, we start collecting for our nine, 10, and 11 month employees, we start collecting two months of premiums. So you'll start noticing for March, April, and May, there will be additional revenue for those employees so that they've paid for their health insurance over the summer months. That's what that is. Do you have any questions tonight?
Justin, you might inform, well, that we met with our advisor. We're trying to get the rate information, so we're trying to determine some costs for next
So, uh, Jamie Brumman, who is, um, our broker that we work through, um, with BP and Jay, um, we've met with them, the leadership has, um, in, in regards to, um, rates. And, um, she's, um, getting that information for us. Typically, they say that early May, I think for a week or two in May, she'll have that information for us that we can, um, discuss.
Okay, are we ready to move on to financial statements?
Okay. Uh, again, if you could go to my favorite page on that area, because that's the snapshot view of where we are financially. And it's where we take a look at where our revenue is compared with the like time of last year as compared to the expenditures. And, uh, we look, we have a budgeted amount and how we're running. Now, we will say that the FY '20 final budget numbers were actual. We're still operating on some estimates in the current year. And I might make the, uh, board aware that our plan is to come in, uh, May. Typically, this is done in June. There are two reasons that we're going to do it in May. We're going to do our final budget revision for the current year in May rather than June, largely because, uh, there's some transition that's going on as far as in the finance office is concerned, to get that out of the way. But probably the bigger driver is the fact that this year's budget is somewhat skewed so much because we've had an infusion of federal dollars to the CARES money and what have you. And we want to position ourselves so that we do reflect, be certain that we do not exceed our spending amounts, but to make adjustments that we know that we need to make. And then we need to go back to work as if it's beginning all over because we, it would not be wise for us to present you a budget based on non-recurring revenues for the upcoming year. So we'll strip out some of those CARES dollars, even though we realize that we'll be getting some next year because the goal is take CARES and throw it away. Joplin Schools need to be operational primarily based upon its anticipated, uh, uh, state and local money. So we will be doing a revision. So these numbers in May, those same numbers, uh, will be, will be the same. But the good news is our revenues are coming in. Our, um, local revenue this year will exceed our budgeted amount. And some of that's because there was some money that was being held by the city of Joplin. Uh, because of the, uh, the TIP areas for the redevelopment zone, we got a little bonus, or actually a better word, the money that was not necessary for them to pay off the bonds. We just got that as if they were actual revenue. Those monies will not be in the budget next year. But our local money is doing well. Our state money, when you see the revision, we projected about a $2 million decrease when the governor released those monies. We will reflect the, uh, updated monies there. So revenue is running, uh, in good shape. But probably the better thing is on the expenditure side, we're still well within, within our budget. So, uh, I, it's a positive as far as the finances of Joplin Schools at the present time. And, uh, that's always good to know. And so I would answer any particular questions that you have, uh, relative to this sheet. But this sheet right here gives you the snapshot view. There are lots of other information, but, uh, this is what I like to look at.
So when you get to the point of looking forward and to your, to your comment that there's a piece of one-time federal dollars, so I assume there's some sort of bridge document that says, hey, these are one-time revenue. Here's expenditures related to that. Then you get to a true baseline of what the go-forward looks like. Is that, is that your idea?
Well, we will probably not include in the original budget that's presented, those CARES dollars that we expect to get next year.
Right. No, I understand that. But I'm saying if you finish this year with this kind of dollar revenue expenditures, you do a bridge document that says, hey, these are all one-time things you pull out, and now you have your
Those, those, I think if I'm understanding your question, when we do the revised budget, we actually will show you these changes that reflect those things that you're talking about.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, uh, public comments. We do have one here. So I'll, I'll ask you to step to the microphone. So you've got three minutes to, to share. Um, when you approach the standing microphone, please give your name and address. Please do not identify any district personnel or student by name or any other identifiable information. Thank you, Melissa.
My name is Melissa Swindell. I live at 7th floor, South Forest Avenue. Thank you for letting me address the board. Um, I'm speaking in my role as the president of the Lexington Hughes Cultural Society. I'm here, uh, first of all, we are a nonprofit organization that's dedicated to celebrating the lives and works of the world-renowned African-American writer, Lexington Hughes, who was born in Joplin. Uh, we are here to request that the school board reconsidered the name of the new school, elementary school on Dover Hill, um, to the Lexington Hughes Elementary. Had we been aware of any discussion for the school name, we would have put it forward, but we weren't aware of any discussion until the brand was ready. As you know, Lexington Hughes was born here in Joplin in 1901. He is one of the most famous and honored American poets. His broad sculpt works with his plays, novels, his works in music. Uh, his fame, his rise in fame came early in his adulthood. He, uh, became one of the leading artists of the Harlem Renaissance and a leading figure for civil rights movement. Um, although he did suffer discrimination, he didn't teach hate. Uh, toward the end of his life, the latter years, he dedicated his life to writing books for children. Um, poetry books that prepared them for the discrimination they might have to encounter. Now, we did, uh, have some handouts that we brought that for anybody who wanted to learn more. But what we're hoping is that we should be celebrating the contributions of Lexington Hughes and other African-American educators, artists, and writers. As a world-renowned creator of jazz, jazz poetry, music, and music, uh, Black Renaissance, we realize the reconsideration of the name of the school would be significant. So I'm here to highlight some of the benefits it would have for Joplin. Uh, naming the new elementary school after Lexington Hughes would boost awareness toward you and appreciate, um, the appreciation of poetry more because we really don't hear about that in our community. Uh, awareness of the Joplin Convention to Lexington Hughes might boost tourism toward town because after all, he wasn't born here. So they might consider that school, you know, like the school. See what I'm saying? Because he was from here. And, um, it could bring in growth, national attention to Joplin, especially during these times uh, when we're trying to attract new business, investment, to promote the town to be an attractive location, to say like the tech industry. Um, all we are asking is to be, that you reconsider the name of the school, taking into account the national significance to the historical figure that was born in Joplin, and he also does have a stamp. Here are some of the words from Lexington Hughes, his poem, "I Too Am America." Tomorrow, I'll be in the kitchen when the company comes. Nobody will dare tell me to go eat in the kitchen. Then besides, they'll see how beautiful I am. Be ashamed. I too am America. Lexington Hughes and the Black community of Joplin are also of Joplin. And it's time that we show some consideration and recognize some of these people in our community.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Thank you.
I'll take any questions if anybody asks me.
Um, we're not able to answer questions due to sunshine, but I will get back with you afterwards. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have our consent agenda. Entertainer?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Derek, second by Michael. Discussion, uh, please vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. Okay, uh, next up on the regular agenda, uh, back to accounts payable.
You all have received a copy of the bills that we're asking you to approve this evening. And again, that's, uh, these are not reflected in the financial statement that we looked at amended bill. They'll be reflected in next month. But when we go in and we, uh, take a look, basically what I again like to do is compare this year with last year. There's never an exact comparison because there are different payroll numbers that are involved. Last month, if you remember, we had a wall amount. And I said, we'll catch up this month. That's why it's $7 million this year compared to $4 million last year. But again, there are no surprise items. There is a, a listing of the, uh, expenditures that we're asking you to approve. And we'd be glad to respond to any questions which come up.
I make a motion that we, uh, pair bills as presented. Second.
Uh, motion by Derek, second by Michael. Uh, any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. And motion passes. Next up, uh, along you.
Yes, thank you. So this evening I have before you, um, pre-AP English coursework. So I have went through a process with the English department specific to pre-AP. So this, these are courses, um, pre-AP 1 and pre-AP 2, that typically our freshmen and our sophomores take in preparation for, um, whether it be dual credit, AP courses as they advance in their coursework. So before you tonight is a recommendation for approval using, um, the College Board resource of Spring Board, specific for pre-AP 1 and pre-AP 2. And this particular process, pre-AP that term, we have been allowed to keep that in our course syllabus. Starting next school year, we have to officially have the audits and the course fees and everything tied. So that's been something that's been coming the past few years. Um, and we are to the point that we need to formalize that process through course fees. So as we have reviewed this, the English department has really tried to find opportunities to raise the bar, if you will. Uh, the College Board is the host of the AP coursework, not just English, but all AP courses. And Spring Board is a curriculum resource to specifically the pre-AP that can support that. Um, we will go through an audit process, but what we found out pleasantly to our surprise, the course fees are reduced by, by 50%. So as we were running some cost analysis and looking at options and opportunities, it not only was their preferred choice of material, but it also is coming in at the lowest cost of the ones that we did review and look at because it will significantly reduce the course fees for pre-AP. So tonight I would ask you to approve, uh, this is a multi-year quote for three years totaling $27,034.50. This includes teacher and student material, um, as well as our pre-AP course fees. The professional development is embedded and it is, um, free of charge through our course fees that we have with pre-AP that those teachers will be participating in. So I would ask for your approval of that this evening.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion by Derek, second by Michael. Um, please, any questions? All right, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. All right. We've got another one, summer school.
Yes. So every year, we have to bring before you an application approval. Um, basically you give us permission on the backside, a core data system that we do with the state, to complete, uh, some fields for that, offering summer school. So this was an opportunity for not only, sometimes this can fall in consent, but I think this is a great opportunity to share with the public our summer school offerings that we will be having. We will run this from June 2nd through July 2nd. We have some great opportunities this summer, some new opportunities. Uh, for example, we will be offering an FTC exploratory class for our freshman, incoming freshmen and sophomores. This is something we have never done before. And really what we're looking at doing is, you know, the end goal is increasing our career tech enrollment. But we have found kids don't know what they don't know. And so this is an opportunity that doesn't conflict with the student's schedule, um, of courses they're wanting to take, but it's a summer opportunity to where they could engage, um, anything from culinary to some welding, some ag, um, and different offerings that they're working through. The other piece that, uh, we are looking at, I brought to you a couple of months ago, intensive, um, literacy resources that we will be using at the primary age. So we have been working with our principals and our teachers of targeting students who we are really encouraging to come to summer school. We have some strong core curriculum um, with our primary literacy that we're trying to address some of these gaps that we are still finding with our kids. And I will tell you, um, so tonight you're approving us to complete the application, but I will tell you, the word is out, enrollment is live, um, and we are tracking very well. We already have over 1,300 students enrolled for summer. So we
It's all in person?
Yes, we, it's all in person. Um, we do have some opportunities for some different credit recovery. So, you know, like online personal health, online finance, they come to the high school one-day weeks. Um, but yes, this would be in-person offerings. So our numbers are tracking fantastic with still So our numbers are tracking fantastic with still a month left of school. So we know what that means, the end of May, we'll see that spike some more.
And registration is online?
Yes.
If the public is interested.
Yes, registration is online. And there's a big banner, "Super Summer." It is going to be a super summer. We're gonna take some field trips, we're gonna do some fun stuff. I've told the principals and the teachers that were starting to get hired, we're gonna work hard to play hard. We're gonna definitely put in our time and do some hard work, but we also are gonna have some opportunities that we did not have last summer. So it's gonna be great.
Would you like to ensure that to thejoplinschool.org, the large banner across the office, that they may make it online?
So this evening, I would ask your approval of our summer school application for our 2021 summer program.
Motion to approve the Super Summer.
All right. So again, Derek has made a motion. Michael has seconded. Any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, to Capitol. Dr. C. Cannon.
Okay. Typically, after you approve the projects, like we did back in February, we put them on consent agenda as the meetings roll, because they've been approved for action. And then, of course, you have to actually approve an action item after it's $15,000 or more. But David and Alicia in the office and Skill Craftsman and the Tony folks and everybody did a wonderful job of putting so many things together at one time. We wanted to bring them to the table to kind of see the multitude of some of the things that they're doing, kind of give you an indication where we're at. So what we did was we summarized all, I think there's 12 projects listed there that you approved earlier. And now you're formally approving us to go ahead based on the bids that we got for chairman process that David and his team went through. And these projects span, you know, several different things throughout the district. I'll let Dave quickly summarize. It's $1.2 million worth of projects. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
We've been just a little busy procuring financials and bids and co-op purchases. And so we're, we're very happy to bring these 12 projects to you. Again, just note that this is a portion of the 2.8 million that's been approved for capital outlay. A lot of these are ones that we needed to jump on fairly quickly to get scheduled for both material procurement as well as to get on schedules for vendors and contractors for this summer to get those projects finished in a timely fashion. So we, we've done those, of those projects as you, we're gonna present those all together to you. Nine of those projects were put out for bid. Three of those projects were brought to you using co-op purchasing, which is an opportunity for us, as we stated in here, that a lot of times typically we use the co, if we want to use the co-op purchasing for things that our local vendors are not quite as ready to take on, that are a little more specialized. And so we've done that, which are vetted through a bid process through the co-op purchasing agency. And so we're bringing those to you tonight with these 12 projects, $1,217,747.25. And I do want to point out to you that facing the actual cost of these 12 projects against the anticipated budget, we are 18% under that anticipated budget.
So with that number, that's a good place to be as we go into this next round, because we don't know, it could be on the other side. So it's, it's good news at this point.
I make a motion to approve capital outlay as presented. Second.
All right. Motion by Derek, second by Michael. Any discussion?
Just a couple of questions quickly is, on the roof side where it says partial replacements, I assume that these are entire roof lines that you're addressing at once? You're not cutting something down a seam and saying, hey, that one's not-
No, by partial, it's the overall footprint we've done on the particular, the two that we're speaking about. McKinley, we've already done a portion of the roof, we'll be doing another portion of the roof. And here at Memorial, we have a section of four classrooms, we're doing just a portion of the top of that.
Okay, gotcha. And then on the, the LED lighting, I mean, I've done many of those, and there, there's a lot of strong return on investments. I'm just curious if you, if you know what the payback is on switching that to the LED?
I don't have that data for you currently. We'll probably take that in conjunction with coming back to report to you once we are also able to procure some rebates to go along with that.
Yeah, that's right. They're pretty strong returns once you have the rebates in there. Yeah, excellent.
And do you know where those are gonna be placed? It just says three locations now.
And, and John, we had in the past, because of rebates, and we were between that six and seven year mark in the past. Now, what we get with this next round, we're not sure as far as payback. We had looked at some, oh, some other products, but, but we kind of waited this out a little bit until technology came in our favor. And we felt like that we were getting 10, 11 years payback on some of these other ones. We weren't sure how much longer they were gonna last, but the last round, because of what we chose, was six to seven years. But again, with the more rebates, that could change a little.
It's probably a little bit better than that, that technology continues to advance.
Right. The, we'll actually be doing four locations. We'll be doing Junk Stadium, which will be LED lighting, McKinley, Stapleton, and Royal Lights.
All right. No further questions? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Last item on the list, plus and deltas.
Well, I have a plus that I would like to again welcome our new board members, Mr. Hurd, Mr. Hartwell. Thank you for joining us.
Glad to be part of it.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Move.
All right. Derek and Michael. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes.